Morning, it's eight thirty and I'm gonna call the March fifth meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. First thing on our agenda is approval of the agenda, and I'm gonna make a suggestion, or a recommendation that we pull the 2024 squad car update off of the consent agenda. The sheriff is here to give us an update on that, in other matter, but do I have a motion to include that pulling this item off?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the agenda with the removal of the consent agenda item.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, next we've got employee recognition. First person we want to recognize this morning is Karen Hagan. Karen? Come forward with Kathy McKay. You're not gonna get to lurk out there in the audience, you gotta come up front.
Thank you, hopefully you have extra time, because Karen's been here thirty years, so there's a lot to say about Karen. She, she's, that's amazing, Karen, thirty years.
Yes, it is.
She was hired in ninety-four, we had a Medicare Certified Home Health Program then, we don't have that now, so she started in that program and then moved into case management, and so she's been in the adult health program areas for lots of years, but she also was trained in child and teen checkups, clinic services, vaccines, of course, foot care, we used to do foot care a lot, and then she dealt with a lot of our public health nuisances, which isn't a fun thing to do, and we go have to go out to homes and we have to deal with people with houses that are not, or don't have walkable spaces and et cetera, so Karen did a lot of that, that was a tough one. And then we went through some funding cuts, and so Karen lost some hours, as well as did some of the other nurses, and that was in two thousand and four, so Karen volunteered to work in our detox program, which was completely different than, that's amazing, Karen. They needed some nurses, and so Karen, and I think another nurse, volunteered to work there to fill in the hours that she missed, and so that was just a win-win for us to have her in the detox program, and also for her so she could make up those hours, I think it was like, maybe she had a half a year of working there. And then, of course, we talk about some of the big events for public health, we had a smallpox vaccine campaign, and they wanted us, that was in two thousand and three, so they were concerned there was gonna be a bioterroristic event, and that smallpox would be used, smallpox was eradicated in nineteen eighty, so they just thought that smallpox was gonna be the use for the bioterroristic event. So we had to reach out to law enforcement, and to first responders, and healthcare workers to try to get those important people vaccinated, so Karen was involved with that. Then our first pandemic, in case we forgot, there was one before COVID, was H1N1, and so Karen and all the rest of the nursing staff were involved, we had mass vaccinations then, it's so easy to forget that one, because we had the massive one of, of course, COVID, and that went a lot longer, so Karen and crew were involved, and anytime there was mass vaccinations, the nurses were involved. So we really appreciate Karen, she has lots of compassion, she has a remarkable ability to maintain a positive attitude, she's caring, has good integrity, and has worked through lots of events in our county, and now during the nursing shortage that's still ongoing, her and team have caseloads way above what they should have, that's even manageable, so, and here she stays with a good attitude, positive attitude, and we just appreciate the asset to our public health department and to all the citizens for Karen and nurses, but thank you for thirty years, Karen, you're awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Corinne Arias. And Holly Warner's gonna be speaking as her boss.
Thank you. Well, Corinne started with us twenty years ago, and she started in our Clay County detox as a roster technician, so she was there for eight years, so I know, you nodded your head, you said, yep, I know Karen, worked together. After that, she moved to our income maintenance unit, where she was an eligibility worker for four years, and determined eligibility for all programs in that area. After eight years, or excuse me, after four years, then you moved to our behavioral health and adult protection unit, where she was there for seven years, and that first year, Corinne completed Roll Twenty-Five Chemical Health Assessments and Adult Protection, and then moved into an adult protection worker role full-time for the remainder of her time there. For the last year, Corinne has been in my unit, in our home and community-based Disability Services Unit, where she is a disability case manager, and so we are so fortunate to have Corinne in our unit, she brings lots of years of experience with Clay County and the different program areas to our unit, which is invaluable for her colleagues, for the people she works with, and the citizens of Clay County. So thank you, Corinne, for all the work that you do, she goes above and beyond every day for the citizens of Clay County, and truly has a passion for the work she does, so thank you for all your work.
Well, I think Kathy gave the longest one that we've ever had. I think she, I think she misses us, I think we ought to have a weekly update.
Must have a good employee there.
All right, next is citizens to be heard, do we have any citizens who are here to speak on any item not on today's agenda? I think they're all happy. Steve, have we got anybody online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
All right. Next is approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
I'll move.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Next we have approval of the minutes from February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll move to approve the minutes for the twenty-fourth. Or whatever, last, please.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. And Sheriff, we have Sheriff Empton here, he's gonna give us an update on the squad car acquisition, and a little bit about the SRO program.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thanks for having me here this morning and squeezing me in. Just for our two thousand twenty-four squad cars, last year we ordered six cars to take delivery in two thousand twenty-four. Enterprise reached out about mid-February and indicated that two of our six orders were accepted, and they didn't know what was gonna happen with the other four orders. It did inform me that in May of this year, that Chevy's gonna be opening up their bid process, or order process, for two thousand twenty-five cars. So we're gonna try and hold out of here a little bit longer, hopefully we'll get our other Tahos in, and ordered. They were able to find an additional Tahoe for us, I don't know where this is coming from, but they did find it, it was a little bit more than what we had initially requested. We initially requested forty-two thousand four dollars, I believe, for the two thousand twenty-four Tahoe last year, this one is about forty-six thousand and some change, the reason for the increase in price is nine hundred dollars to put a spotlight on it, because this one doesn't have a spotlight on it right now, and some delivery fees and things of that nature, that's why there's a little bit of an increased cost there. So that brings us up to being three vehicles short for our order, and Enterprise is still looking for us, it's best for us if we can stay Tahoe to Tahoe, it's a lot cheaper when it comes to the build, for example, if we go Tahoe to Tahoe, the build is anywhere between six and seven thousand dollars between transferring the equipment over and things of that nature. When we go from like a Ford Explorer to a Tahoe, it gets to be anywhere between twelve and fourteen thousand dollars, so it's a lot, a lot less expensive for us if we can stay in that, in the same vehicle make and model. And with that, I yield to the board for any questions.
Any questions for the Sheriff?
You were saying forty-six thousand, you meant forty-six hundred, or?
It went from forty-two thousand four dollars to forty-six thousand dollars and some change for the, this Tahoe they located for us. Yeah, the difference is...
Are you talking monthly, or?
No, it's for the year, for the year, it's actually for the price of the Tahoe, so then there's, I think the monthly payment is like, I have it in there, I don't have the information in front of me, but it's thirteen hundred dollars and some change for the monthly, monthly payment.
And the monthly payment's based on the cost of the vehicle?
Correct, yep.
So that's not gonna translate over to where we're actually paying that per year, it's just what the, the, the cost of the vehicle will establish the monthly payment?
Correct, yeah, that's what Enterprise gives us for the monthly payment cost.
Any, any other questions? Well, we're looking at hopefully getting back to normal fleet strength, is it gonna save us any money waiting a year on this, I mean, it's kinda like an open position, or?
Yes, it'll save some money in the internal service, but it might have some increased costs in maintenance.
Okay.
Yep.
What are the other options out there in the market?
Well, you still have your Ford Explorers or your Durangos, and the Durangos are pretty tight, they're really tight if we, if we give one to a training officer, that once you get the computer and things like that in there, it's super tight for them, the Explorers are a little bit better for space-wise, so it's just, if we're able to get those as well, kinda late in the game right now.
Okay.
So.
Well, keep us abreast, and good luck, I know these are interesting times.
Yeah, our rep that we've been working with, she's been really good to work with, our initial rep, there was a lot of promises that he provided to us, and they just haven't been able to, haven't been able to fulfill, but she's doing her best, our rep now is doing her best to work with us and get us the vehicles that we ordered.
Okay. And update on SROs?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if we could, the reason Mark, Sheriff brought this forward was, is you approved a certain dollar amount for the purchase, and so we would need a motion to accept the thirteen hundred and thirty-dollar and thirteen cent monthly rate for this vehicle.
Okay, very good, thank you, Steve.
Is that a, is that a three-year?
That's a three-year lease, yep.
Any questions on that, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Passes.
Thank you. As far as the SRO bill goes, that was voted on in the House yesterday, overwhelming support, it appeared to pass, I counted seven no votes, and then two representatives that did not vote, and the rest voted to support the bill, so after this, now it goes to the Senate, we're hoping that it'll get that same support in the Senate, and then we're hoping that it will eventually make its way to the governor's desk to be signed, and go into law, and once it goes into law, it's effective immediately, we will not have to wait until when they generally go into law, like January one, or August, or not January, but July one or August one.
Well, our deputies that we have as SROs, have they got the adequate training to where they can go back into schools immediately after the implementation of the new legislation?
They, they will be able to go back in the schools right away, we'll have to take a look at the training requirements, and then get them to that training, they did give us some time in the law to be able to get that training completed.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can, can you just give us a high level of what the, what the change is to the law that's, you find more positive?
Really, they added entirely another section, and a lot of it just has to do with training of the SROs, and what, what's the expectation is of them, and there's some things in there that says that, you know, foster good relationships with the, with the students and educators and things like that, along with investigating crimes that occur, but the biggest thing is the education piece, that's one of the things that we'll have to take a look at, and we'll probably end up having a little bit more funds spent on training them, but it's needed, we have to do it, so.
My understanding is all that training will be under the control of Minnesota Post?
That's correct, yep.
So that keeps it within the law enforcement profession?
It does, yep.
I know I've heard a little bit of, hmm, it's not quite what we want from both sides, one of my favorite politicians in my life was David Pryor, who was a senator from Arkansas, and he once said, if everybody leaves a room and nobody's happy, it's probably pretty good legislation.
Yeah, if everybody's equally unhappy, unhappy, then it's probably a good thing.
So I think maybe we're on to getting something that we can work with, but it'll be good to get them back in the schools.
It will be, it will be, they are, they are teaching DARE right now, we did get them in the schools to teach DARE, because that is a Sheriff's Office-sponsored program, they're not in there as SROs, they're in there as, as patrol deputies teaching the DARE program.
Well, I appreciate the fact that they've stayed, our deputies have been very attentive at staying present in the school, and adding to the security and the feeling of security for our teachers and staff and students, so grateful for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the Sheriff? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Matt, you're up, Matt Jacobson, Director of Planning and Zoning, with the annual department update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, here to give my annual update for our department activities, and what's been going on in two thousand twenty-three and into the future So I think I start off my update each year with our mission statement of our department, and I'll just read it here, "The mission of Clay County Planning Office is to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of county citizens through the development, implementation, and administration of appropriate planning, zoning, subdivision regulations, which follow applicable state and federal laws and the Clay County Comprehensive Plan." I've highlighted that public health, safety, and general welfare of county citizens, because when our Board of Adjustment, or Planning Commission, or U.S. County Commissioners are making decisions on permits, or subdivisions, zoning changes, things like that, this is the number-one thing that you all would have to consider when making those changes or approving permits, how it impacts the public health, safety, and general welfare of county citizens. And that's, of course, your interpretation of that, because it's a pretty broad and general statement, and there's no specific definitions of what public health, safety, and general welfare means. When we updated the County Comprehensive and Transportation Plan a couple of years ago, we developed a vision statement, "Clay County values its existing rural and agricultural character while ensuring a thoughtful, balanced approach to growth and development in the years to come. Clay County is committed to principles of equity, inclusion, and service by providing quality services and facilities for all citizens and future residents. Clay County recognizes the importance of its agricultural and natural resources while looking for new opportunities to support economic vitality. Clay County will promote sound planning principles that foster economic, environmental, and community resiliency to ensure that Clay County thrives into two thousand twenty-four and beyond." So that's kind of an all-encompassing, encompassing vision statement that kinda guides land use development, but then also just generally how all of our departments function and serve our citizens in the county as well. So what our office does, first thing we do, planning, just maintaining the comprehensive plan, providing updates to you all, to the Planning Commission, on goals and objectives in that plan, and then, of course, the Development Code, enforcing the Development Code, working with you all and the Planning Commission to make any modifications to the Development Code. The Development Code is the main tool that implements the vision, the goals, and objectives found within the comprehensive plan. The bulk of what our office does is permitting, so building permits, and I will say, we don't have a building code, we have a zoning code, so it's a little bit misleading with building permits, but just making sure that new construction follows the Clay County Development Code. Land alteration permits in shoreland areas, and then minor subdivisions, so taking a parcel, making it into two parcels, combining a parcel, doing a boundary line adjustment, things like that. We also provide staffing and support and guidance to the Board of Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment hears matters on if someone would like to vary from the Development Code, because they have some sort of practical difficulty with their lot, or something like that, in terms of what they wanna build. You, as the Board of Commissioners, provide any staffing, guidance, information, things like that, and then the Planning Commission, who hears and makes decisions on use permits, environmental review, and then makes recommendations to you as a board as well. We also do investigations and enforcement of any Development Code violations, we do, Clay County does participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, so our office does provide that flood plain administration service, and then also the Shoreland Program through the state. So some highlights from two thousand twenty-three, building permits seem to be up, so we processed two hundred and ten building permits last year, I will say there's a caveat that forty-eight of those building permits were after the fact, so violations, and just wanna give a lot of credit to our planning technician, Erica Frank, she has done a great job with really ramping up the enforcement side of things, and so we've seen the number of after-the-fact permits year-over-year steadily increase. One thing that was down a little bit this year was new housing starts, so two thousand twenty-two, we had thirty-one, in two thousand twenty-three, we had twenty-five. So in terms of valuation, the average permit valuation for a single permit was about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred dollars, and so if you look at all of the valuation for all two hundred and ten permits that we issued last year, we're looking at a valuation of, it's about twenty-seven million dollars of new development in the county for two thousand twenty-three, which is the highest it's been since two thousand fifteen. Subdivisions, two thousand twenty-one was kind of a big year for subdivisions, a lot of it had to do with interest, mortgage interest rates and refinancing, so we just saw a lot more of those. Two thousand twenty-two, it kinda, that follows that, whenever the interest rates are favorable, you might see people refinancing, and banks might say, well, we'll refinance, but just for your, your home site, and not all of your ag land, or something like that, so we see a lot of those types of subdivisions. So we had forty-three new parcels created this year, seven boundary line adjustments, we did not have any Platts this year, I'm anticipating, though, that in two thousand twenty-four, we might see one or two Platts come through. In terms of conditional and interim uses, a lot of these conditional and interim uses are, would be for business, commercial activity, industrial activity, but then there are also use permits for other things, like if you wanna have a temporary second dwelling on your house, things like that, that was down a little bit this year, two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two were kinda high years, and we're kinda going back, regressing to the mean a little bit with those use permits. I think in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, one of the main drivers was gravel pits and amendments as well, and you can kinda see this, it's a little hard to read, but this is looking at from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three, specific use permits kinda by type, and we're kinda looking at trends here, so looking at it into the past three years, you know, wholesale store, or warehouse and storage has been one of our big uses that have, we've seen in the county, community solar is another one, and then aggregate mining as well, gravel mining. Variances, so variance requests, when someone has a development, but for some reason, they're not able to comply with the provisions of the code, they can request a variance, and the Board of Adjustment is the body that looks at that variance, looks at it against the Comprehensive Plan, goals and objectives, looks at it against state rules and regulations as applicable, and then also looking at it in terms of the code, and seeing kind of if the request is a reasonable request. The main thing that an applicant for a variance has to do is they have to demonstrate a practical difficulty that's not just caused by economic reasons, so if you wanna build within a setback, your only reason can't be because, oh, it's cheaper to build there. So we did thirteen of those, same as in twenty, well, two thousand twenty-three, we also did thirteen, so it's kinda been the same every year, the past few years. Zoning violations, and again, this is hats off to Erica and Rita as well for this, we're just above a hundred and twenty zoning violations, about forty-five of those have been resolved, or, no, I should say sixty, about sixty-one or two of them have been resolved, we do have the remainder, though, about half, we're still active, some are multi-year. How we do enforcement is, we really wanna work with the landowners, and get them into compliance, give them every opportunity to get into compliance with the code, sometimes that does not happen, and then there are two avenues to go, go through with enforcement, you can either go criminal, in our code, a code violation is a misdemeanor, that really doesn't solve the, the problem, though, so more often than not, we take a civil route, which is, when you get into the court system, that can take a while, so that's why we have some multi-year violations going on, is because working through courts and things like that.
How do we find out about these violations? Do people report that, or are we going out there and looking?
We do a little bit of going out and looking, not too much, though, just because we're a staff of three, and so it's really, you know, can be difficult sometimes to go out and, and do active enforcement, we get some, we get citizen complaints, we might get, our assessor's office does go out and do appraisals, and they always check for building permits, because that's an integral part of the assessment process, in terms of looking at valuation and things like that, so anything that's new and doesn't have a building permit, we might find out that way. We do inspections on, for gravel, for example, we do inspections on gravel pits, and can determine through those inspections if there's anything that needs to be addressed there. Then also, recently, too, we've been working with law enforcement as well, because our Sheriff's deputies are out in the county at all hours of the day, and so things that are going on in the evening and at night, we're able to find out from them as well, so we have really valued that relationship, and then also with our Environmental Health Department, too. So, but I'd say most of our violations and investigations are driven by citizen complaints.
And is there one area that you see certain types of violations more than others, in other words, is it more toward uses, or more toward accessory buildings?
I think, yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Krabnikoff, I think that the biggest one that we see is, someone builds a shed or an outbuilding, it's small, they didn't think that they needed a permit for it, and so, and then we're a little more lenient and forgiving, and, and working with them to get that resolved, that's probably the number-one violation, those are very easy to fix, because it's often just a simple mistake. I would say that probably every single gravel pit in the county has one or two or more violations, and that comes up every time they're doing an inspection, or a permit renewal, things like that, that's why we're trying to be more proactive with our gravel pit inspections, we do have sixty-four, sixty-five now, active pits in the county.
That's mainly just pulling aggregate from areas that are in a permitted area?
A lot of them, most of them would be mining within setbacks. A lot of them, most of them would be mining within setbacks. So setbacks from roads, setbacks from property lines, going over their permitted acreage, operating outside of their permitted hours, not maintaining haul roads. And we'll kind of maybe get into that here on my next slide a little bit with our gravel tax.
Thank you.
That's kind of, those are the main ones.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Ms. German. Just for the viewing public, just to be aware that all of these statistics that you are presenting today are all for rural areas of the county outside of incorporated cities, right?
Yes.
We might have some people watching and think, boy, some of these numbers seem kind of low for a county like ours that is growing, but a lot of this is basically in the rural areas of Clay County.
Yep, that's correct. And that's a good point to make, Commissioner Campbell, thanks. Yep, none of our incorporated communities, we don't do any, we don't have a zoning jurisdiction. So, but we do, I will just to jump onto that, we do, if an incorporated community, some of our smaller cities might have questions related to shoreline or floodplain, and we always try to help them out if they have questions with any of those issues or areas. So for gravel tax revenues, looking at, and material reported, it looks like this year compared to the last couple of years was kind of an up year. So for 2023, we collected just shy of $420,000 in gravel tax revenue. There's about 2,380,840,000 tons of material that was removed from pits in Clay County and then 284,620 cubic yards. So some companies report cubic yards, some reporting tons. And that's distributed to townships, to the county, and then to a reserve fund as well, which I think right now is sitting at just under a million dollars for our reserve fund. That'd be it. The auditor's office tracks all that though too. I'll also add that Rita, Erica, and Ann from the auditor's office, I think have done a really good job at working to make sure that these, this revenue is being corrected or being collected and that it's accurate. We're kind of working towards that, that we're tracking where the material is coming from, in what pit it's coming from. And that's really important because we want to make sure that reporting is accurate, just so the town, because townships that have gravel pits do get more revenue. And so we want to make sure that, that what's, what goes from a pit, once it hits a public road, that's when that tax needs to be reported. And that's, that's when it comes into effect.
The township that has a gravel pit will get the benefits of the taxes from that or are they distributed?
It's distributed, the formula is, so of all the total gravel taxes, 42.5% goes to the townships. Of that 42.5%, 50% goes to all the townships. And then the other 50% goes to townships with gravel pits.
Okay.
Yep.
And at this point, there's not any formula to provide more to the townships that are, whose roads are damaged by these, the gravel operations?
Yeah, yeah. And really, I think a lot of that with, with that is leaning on the operators themselves and making sure that in their permits, the condition, there's a strong condition in there for them to maintain their haul roads. That's really kind of how we would like to see it as the main users of whatever the haul road is, they should be maintaining it. So, and we do work with the highway department on that. And Justin and Kim do a really good job when they're out there checking the roads, talking to operators and haulers and making sure that they keep those roads in good shape.
Is there anything we need to do as a commission to facilitate that?
One thing I would like to do that I've done in the past and kind of with your blessing is every spring, I like to send out a letter to all of the gravel pit operators, kind of reminding them of their responsibilities, they're making sure that they're aware and of their permit conditions, making sure that they're not using air brakes or jake brakes, that they're tarping their loads, things like that. And that letter I kind of send on behalf of, could send on behalf of the commissioners. And then typically I would sign that, the sheriff would sign it, and then our county engineer would sign it as well. That's kind of one first step. I think that seems to help, at least helps to remind those operators of their responsibilities and obligations.
Did you, excuse me, did you mention tarping loads?
Yes.
I haven't seen very many gravel trucks tarping their loads. Are they doing that or?
Um, I've, kind of 50/50 of what I'm out and about, I'll see. Some do and some don't. There's, with, with the gravel operation too, you know, with haulers, there's, communication needs to happen between who actually holds the permit and who's actually doing the hauling. So, yep.
Mr. Chair, and maybe just a clarification, I think Justin is up later this morning, but I think one of the things that we, just to kind of reiterate, one of the things that Matt talked about is due to a recent legislative change, only the counties that have the active pits actually receive, actually receive the gravel tax. And so that's a change that from previous years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, my apologies for that, thanks. So in 2024, one thing that we're working on and are well underway is the development code update. This is a wholesale update to the development code. So every single section, every provision is getting looked at and seeing if there's changes that need to be made in Minnesota statute 394 dot 231. Within three years of adopting a comprehensive plan, it's recommended that the county consider adopting ordinances. And so that's kind of what we're doing is updating our code to match, better match the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. I just want to thank, we have a study review committee that's made up of a variety of representatives from county departments, from the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, and then county commissioners, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. So just want to thank all of them for their, their work on that and reviewing that and making sure that we have a code that is up to 2024 standards. And that's easy, clear, and understandable for our citizens and businesses who want to work and live in Clay County. And then also that it is, there's parity and it's congruent with Minnesota state law as well. And then another thing we're looking at doing, and we've, the Planning Commission has talked about this and still doing some more research on this, but we want to, we're looking at maybe doing a fee schedule update later in 2024, keeping the base fees the same for our permits. So, you know, we have some of the lowest permit fees in Minnesota, of counties in Minnesota. I want to, I, understanding is kind of want to keep it that way. But modifying fees and penalties for permit, use violations and variances as well.
So through that, are the, it's been a, what, a couple of years since I've been on, but are the, are the permits still 150 or are they higher, the base fee?
The use permits is, the fee is 225.
Oh, 225.
Yep.
And, and then back, more importantly to me, is on the penalties for the permits and all that, you did raise a couple of years back too, didn't you? Are they still at 500 or?
So for building permits, it's basically an after the fact, but it's three times.
Oh, it's three, okay.
Three times that, yep.
All right. And has that been a recent change or?
I think that's been in effect for a number of years.
Okay. And then, so you're looking at something beyond that possibly?
Looking at mainly what we're seeing and what the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment is seeing is some after the fact use permits. So someone starts a new use on their property and they don't get a permit for it. Or after the fact variances, someone builds something, it's in compliance with the code. One avenue that they can take is they can come to the Board of Adjustment for relief. So looking at modifying or adding some administrative penalties and fines for those types of things. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead. Oh, questions?
Yeah.
Kevin.
I just, I just wanted to mention the Planning Commission Chair Ezra is here today too this morning, and I just wanted to recognize him being here and thank him for his time being and working on the Planning Commission as the chair. I think that's nice to see you here this morning.
Welcome. We appreciate the efforts you put in.
And thank you, I just want to thank you all for supporting our department. I want to thank the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, and then Rita and Erica, our staff as well. Been fantastic to work with, and I think we do a lot of good work for the county. You guys, you all provide great direction for us, so thank you. And oh, I should, wouldn't be, I should also thank Mr. Larson, Mr. Melton and his office, and Mike Leeser has been working on the attorney side of things, on the legal side of things too, so want to thank them as well.
Any other questions before we let them go? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very comprehensive report. Next up.
We need to go to the bid opening or?
Yeah, I think that's kind of time.
Yeah, we're, I think we had, yeah.
Okay, next up.
Number six.
Yeah, number six. Bid opening for SAP 014626032.
Yes, good morning. So this is the Mill and Overlay Project on Kasaw 26, and it goes from Avril to Trunk Highway 75. So there was one addendum on this project that we pushed the starting date back to June 3rd, just to allow for if we are successful in the grant that's out there right now, that we would still be able to access that money. So every bid I read does have a bid bond in the amount of 5%. And then they did also acknowledge the addendum. So the first bid we got is Mark Sanding. I guess one other thing, that engineer's estimate for this project is $4,346,805.00.
How many miles, how many miles of road is that?
Nine and a half. So it's a very large project. First bid we received was from Mark Sanding Gravel. Their bid was $4,693,022.35. The second bid we received was from Central Specialties Incorporated. Their bid was $4,017,47.50. The third bid we received was from Border States Paving Incorporated. Their bid was $3,956,146.95. The fourth bid was from RJ Zaveron &amp; Sons Incorporated. Their bid was $3,889,047.10. And the final bid we received was from Knife River Materials. Their bid was $3,672,363.40. So obviously the bids came in really, really good. I was very conservative on my estimate because this job has 47,000 tons of asphalt on it. So, and we are using a mixed design that we've only used one other time. So it is a very expensive mix. I am comfortable with those numbers. Knife River is the one who did the 26th project last year and did a phenomenal job, so I have no reservations in awarding the project to Knife River.
And again, I want to ask the same question I asked last, so under this type of bidding, we don't have any issues with quantities? That's all?
Nope. So it's all electronic, so it's, there's no room for error, like back when we had paper bids where there could be a mathematical error. And they have to sign electronically to their bids, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move a little bid of $3,672,363,040 from Knife River Materials.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You got it?
Where's Knife River at?
So they're all over the place, but this particular branch of Knife River is from Bemidji.
Justin, later in our agenda, we're going to talk a little bit about adjusting our legislative priority and it has to do with a project of yours and it has to do maybe with this one.
Yep.
Can you hang around for that?
Yep, Steve and I had already discussed, I'll be back and.
Okay.
For that one.
Good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mark, now it's your turn. Mark Sloan, Information Services Director, request approval, resolution 2024-10 for Public Land Survey Systems and Preservation Grant.
Good morning. Okay, so just a quick recap. The Public Land Survey System was something that was done in the 1870s in our part of the state, when crews came through and they originally established where the section corners and quarter section corners were throughout our entire county. And that, that work basically laid out the land that makes our county and allows how we subdivide the land. Those corners are the, probably the most important piece that are out there when it comes to figure out what, who owns what piece of property. Surprisingly, there's, there was never really a program to maintain those corners over the decades and centuries since. This board was wise enough, back in 2015, we began a project here with a section corner remonumentation program where we hired a contracted surveyor and we set aside funds every year to work on that with a specifically targeted areas, and we've been working on that since then. And it's been highly effective and I think very beneficial to all of our citizens that, well, especially the ones that live in those areas. The state of Minnesota has realized the importance of the Public Land Survey System, or PLSS as it's called, and they are making available funding to help preserve those monuments that are out there. So what, what they're doing is they have a grant program that they put out in place. We have a whole bunch of steps we have to go through to apply for our grant, and I'm here for one of those steps. Our application is due April 5th, so we'll be working over the next few weeks to actually put that all together. This map I put up on the screen kind of shows our county. So with our, with the remonumentation program we've been doing internally, we started in the bottom corner of our county. We've been working kind of up north. We did, you know, Tansom, Humboldt, Scream Park, Eglin and Holly Township last year. The next targeted areas we'll be working on will be the Highland Grove Cromwell area. We met with our contracted surveyor, we talked to him about this grant and what the possibilities are and what the costs are and how we want to apply for that. And the grant, we can apply for anywhere from 50 to $300,000. And we can use it in two different ways. One is for actually survey work, and the other one is to put the information from all the corners that we collect online and make it available to the public. So we're, we're applying for both types of grants. One will make a web map application where the survey corner information will be available, and then we're applying mostly for survey work to be done. And this area, the targeted area we selected was Highland Grove Township, along with the six townships or six sections on the west and north side of that township. It comprises 48 sections, it's 186 corners. It's, and we're estimating it's going to cost about $250,000 to do that work, which is what we hope the grant will provide us with. Now, one thing I might mention a little bit different, how this grant works versus the work we've been doing here internally with our remonumentation program, with our program we've been doing is if there's a section corner With our program, we've been doing is if there's a section corner monument there, and it's been recorded in our county recorder's office, we consider that complete, and we just move on, and we've been targeting the ones that are missing. Under this grant, we have to revisit every corner. So even if there's already a monument there and a certificate, we'll revisit it and refile a new certificate for it. So in that area with those 186 section corners, we will go to every single one of them. So it, that's why the cost gets a little higher. But it gives us a much better product at the end, and we think it's a really good thing. I think it'd be great for us, and I put the other resolution for you to consider. The resolution actually has three separate things we're targeting all in one here. I figured I'd try to roll it all together. One is I have to have a resolution from you to apply for the grant. The second one is I have to have a resolution from you that says we can accept the grant money once it comes, and then we have to have one that says we can expend those dollars for this type of work. So we've packaged all that into this nice resolution that answers all of those questions, and will be a part of, I think this is Attachment 8 of our bid pack, or our application packet that we'll be submitting. As I mentioned, we're going to, we're applying for $300,000 grant. We have two years to expend this, so it'll be, end date would be March 2026, so we're expecting it'll take two years to do all that work. I learned yesterday that 65 counties in Minnesota are applying for these grants, and they have $9 million available, and they're expecting about 16 million in requests. So I don't know what, where we'll fall into that, but we will do our best to make sure that our grant looks good, and we get as much as we can. Our section corner remonumentation program that we've been doing, it will continue as it has, we'll keep chugging away. What this will allow us to do is more. It just allows us to do more than what we could have done on our own, and it speeds it up. So it's a, it's a good thing. Any, any questions?
Well, the funding that we receive won't, or won't, we'll continue to do the remonumentation that we normally do.
Yes.
And this will simply be additional work.
We'll just do more work, yes.
Okay.
Because we'll be using the same crews, and we'll just add on to what we can do. Yes.
Very good.
Which will speed it up.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the grant.
Second.
Resolution, excuse me.
All right, we have motion to approve Resolution 2024-10. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, Mark, move on to the next one.
Next item. All right, this is, this is the exciting stuff, I guess. Our website is our, probably the, one of the biggest ways we interact with the public. You know, we mentioned before, we get about 80,000 visits a month on our website. Our number one page always is our inmate roster with about 16,000 visits a month, but we have a tremendously large amount of information out there, more than 5,000 pages of stuff. On the slide right now is how our page looks right now, today, as of right now. Starting at 10 o'clock this morning, a transition will start taking place where it's going to move to its new look. Over the last many months, we started in August, a group of us working together to figure out how we wanted to change the look and function of the site. It's a, this is a function that our website hosting company allows us to do every few years, is a total redesign. So we looked at how some of the pieces work, and how they look, and we came up with a whole bunch of different ideas how that should be better, and how we can better enhance the experience for our visitors. So this is, this is the new look. Surprise! It's like, it's, we're pretty excited. A big part of that, and included in the packet, is the new color palette that rolled out is tied to this. One of the exciting things about that is, well, you'll start seeing that in other materials we produce here at Clay County, whether it's brochures, or pamphlets, or graphic arts projects, or, and all those things, we'll start using the same type of color schemes. On this main page here, this is just a screenshot of what it'll look like, but the functionality's a little bit different. We tried to, we looked, spent a lot of time looking at what people are looking for, trying to make sure they can find it easily and effectively. The reason I'm here today is because, starting at 10, I mentioned, until noon, this change is going to be taking place, so if you're visiting our website between 10 and noon today, as you're doing it, it may change as you're looking at it. And certainly this afternoon, you come back, it may look totally different. I don't want anybody to be totally surprised and say, "Oh, my gosh, I'm in the wrong place." Because you're not. It's just a much better experience, hopefully, than what we've had before.
Very good. Looks good. Any questions?
I was just trying to think, where does the sunflowers come in, as far as Clay County?
Oh, we have, the top banner of our site, we have, we run a slideshow through there now, and we have, well, Jackie is, we've sent her out to actually take pictures of various locations in the county. You'll see different things appear on there, and we'll change those out regularly, but yeah, it's just, it's pictures of something we saw in our county.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, you have to look a little bit to find sunflower.
Yeah, especially this time of year, but, yeah, exactly. But, yeah, no, it's a, we're trying to highlight different parts of the county and different scenic things out there, and, yeah. It's kind of a fun little piece.
It's okay, I mean, I was just wondering where the sunflower fields are all at.
Jackie, want to ID the location, or is it confidential?
No. There you go, Jackie. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mark. Okay, next up, Cecilia Amadu, Extension Regional Director, request approval of an appointment of the Extension Committee for Siham Amadi.
Thank you, Commissioners. So I have Siham here as our new potential CEC member of the Extension Committee. Siham submitted her application, but I will give her opportunity to just talk a little bit about herself and the communities that she's already on, and how she'll be a great fit for our CEC committee, so.
Good morning, Commissioners. As stated, my name is Siham Amadi. I've grew up in Clay County, very familiar with the area, spud and a cobbler, and made it a mission in my life to serve my community and connect individuals, particularly finding housing stability, work, and education. So I've made it my occupations in my life to be able to serve my community. Just saw this opportunity to be able to continue that, especially in the larger role in Clay County. I'm very familiar with the region. Worked in Barnesville for a time, frequent Holly and Zabon and all the places. So just saw it as a way that I could, again, serve and connect the changing community to the different resources, particularly youth and families that need those resources.
Very good. Any questions?
Yeah, I just appreciate you stepping up in the application. I'm somewhat aware of your background and talent, and I just certainly support this appointment, and look forward to working with you. I'm on the committee also.
Can you come in, Commissioner Krabnoff?
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. It's been, it's been a lot of years, I used to be involved with the Extension quite, quite a bit. My kids that were in that are grown up now, and we've got new Commissioners that serve in that, but can you remind, how many people are on the Extension Committee?
Per statue, we're supposed to have nine people, two Commissioners, six Committee at large, and then some Communities choose to have a youth representation on that, so the statue says nine.
And do we have a, do we have a good variety of residents from different parts of the county that's, that serve?
Yeah, currently, and that was part of the push, to see who else can we invite to sit on the committee that represent the communities that Clay County serves. And so we're hoping that Siham can serve that role, but also, we have two other positions that are currently open. And I connected with Commissioner Mojul yesterday about how do we fill those two other positions, making sure that we have rural representation.
That was, that was kind of one of my points. I think that's, that's certainly is important, to maintain some sort of rural membership or rural participation on that as well. A lot of the things that Extension does has enough, a lot to do with ag, and, and of course, the 4H, of course, isn't just for rural kids, that's for in-town kids as well, but I think just to get in a good variety of membership there is, is good. And so, how did, so you said there's two, two more, how do you, how do you go about, and, Siham, how did you learn of this? Did you?
I have a system.
Okay.
I have a big sales sheet that tells me who, when people get on the board, I, we collect that information, and then when they serve their two terms, then we go back and say, "Okay, you've served their two terms." Commissioners do have the right to reappoint the same people, so we've had people in the committee that have been there for over 14 years, so trying to cycle through that and say, "Okay, you know, this is not a life sentence, we want people to cycle through and bring new perspective." So right now, we have Derek Crumpton, he was on there since 2014, and then Terry Smith, whose position is also coming up, and then Amy Masson had that youth background, but she, her term had ended. So we're replacing those three positions, and we have one more application that will be coming back to you, and that will be filling Derek's position as well.
So to, how did you find out about the?
Oh, that's what you mean.
Yeah.
So we did a recruitment, we posted on the county website, we also posted on the university website, and then we have it on our social media. So it was a public posting, and then people.
So you, you saw that then through that public?
Yes, I saw it on the Clay County website, and it's posted on social media, and I applied for it, so I didn't know of it otherwise. I don't know anybody on the board.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just curious about the process and how one learns of this. We have, you know, for future people to, if, if there's ways that we can improve on recruiting people to, to apply for these things too, that's even better, so I know, I know Jackie's our wizard with that kind of stuff, so she'll help get us through that.
Yeah, we welcome Jackie to get a post on the county website.
Very good.
And certainly through the 4H clubs, there's, you know, people reaching out, you know, trying to invite people in.
Did we get a motion on this?
Not yet.
It's an action item, if, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll make the motion, we appoint Siham Amadi for a three-year term on the Extension Committee.
Second.
And motion, second. Any further discussion?
Just have a question, Commissioner. So it will be two three-year terms, so.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, you do it, we do it at three years at a time, don't we?
We.
Isn't that what we?
The state statute said it's two terms, so that's three years per term.
We, we appoint per term, don't we?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, generally, we've, we've done three years at a time, but.
Yeah. Just historically, you know, that, when, when we appoint, it's for, it's for one three-year term. And that's just how we've always done it, I guess, so I just, looking for that clarification here.
But you're telling me there's a statute?
Yeah, there's a state statute. And I guess, I mean, you guys are the Commissioners, you can.
If the state wants a six-year term, they'd have it as a six-year term. I think the state statute probably indicates that two three-year terms are possible for persons.
Yeah.
But a term would indicate that after three years, a reappointment would be necessary.
So should, do we come back to you at the, at the end of that term to reappoint?
Well, I, I think that's what we do with all of our other Commissioners and boards that we do, they're, we do them a one three-year term at a time, if they're three-year terms.
I'd like to ask clarification. So anyway, yes, well, I'll hold in my motion, it'd be for a one three-year term.
Any further discussion?
And again, that's nothing against anybody, that's just, that's just the process that we've done for all these years, and.
Yeah, and for me, I just need to know how to better do this, so that, you know, we're following what you want. So that's why I asked for that clarification, so we can come back with the right way.
Any further? All in favor, indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Cory, Cory Bang, Solid Waste Manager. Next up is request approval to publish a request for bids on landfill hay lease, hay land at least, hard to say 10 times fast.
I'll try not to repeat it for you. Yes, we have approximately 80 acres or 79 acres of land at the landfill that we have annually hayed. It is by rule that we have to have it cut every year. It saves us money if somebody else comes in and cuts it, obviously, plus it's able to help out a local farmer or rancher. So I would be looking for approval to post for the applications or for the bid to do the hayland lease, it would be for a three-year term, so that would be my request for this one.
Move approval.
Second.
Have motion, and a second. Do we have any other questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right.
And my next one I'm here for today, we have a landfill tanker that hauls leach aid, all of our leach aid out of landfill. Last year, we hauled 1.373 million gallons, and it seems to be going up. The current tanker we have is showing some wear, it's going to need some work done on it, so my request, and I went out and found one, would be to purchase a second trailer. We're having trouble keeping up the way it is, so having the second trailer and several drivers, the manpower to do it, we would be able to haul with both trailers in times of need. In the past, we've hired out, when we've gotten behind, and it costs us $3,000 to $4,000 a week to have them come in and haul, so the trailer would pay for itself, you know, in a few events. So my request today would be to purchase a trailer, it would be all set up for what we need for $20,000.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Wait a second. In a second. Okay, motion, a second. Give Mr. Krabnoff.
Just a question, not so much on the purchase, but this hauling, and where does it go? Where's the leach aid go?
It goes to either Pelican Rapids or Fargo.
Okay. And what, and it goes, what happens with it then?
It gets, it goes to their water treatment facilities.
Okay.
So Pelican treats it, puts it back into the Pelican River, and Fargo treats it and puts it back into the Red River. So it gets treated, so it's clean, and takes out all the contaminants.
Okay, and I was going to ask this when you were talking about it last week or the week before. Why don't we do it within Clay County?
Because there's no place within Clay County that'll take it at this time.
Okay.
We, we pursued Moorhead and some other places, and they're not set up at this time for the volume we have, so.
I see, okay.
We really have three options, it's Pelican, Fargo, or Minneapolis, and we're licensed to take it to all three, so.
Okay, yeah. And then is that a bid with them?
It, it's a contracted process, so they charge, Fargo charges us seven cents a gallon, and Pelican charges us five cents per gallon to treat the product, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Cory. Next up, we have our county attorney, Brian Melton, with the annual update of the county Attorney's Office.
Governor, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, it's always a pleasure to be here. I, I think I've said it before, but it's always nice to follow a lot of the other departments that come in, because as I listen to those, I get to see and know some of the different things that we've worked on with those other departments. We have terrific department heads, other departments, and so when you hear some of the projects that they've been working through, we've had that opportunity to work with them, whether it's through contracting work or other legal issues that we've helped them with, it's, it's just nice to, to see that and see that work and that success as it, as it continues to go on. Our county mission in the Clay County Attorney's Office, obviously, is to promote justice, public safety, effective government through prosecuting crime, protecting people in need, and then working with and representing Clay County. My management team, myself, along with two other chief assistants, Pam Foss has been in my office over 20 years, a great deal of experience in prosecuting crime, and then Katie Stock, my civil chief, she's been there now two full years as the chief, prior to that, about three years in that work, and we'll talk a little bit about what each department or each section does. My budget's around approximately 2.5 million, primarily for salaries and trial expenses and some other training. Typically, our clearance rate for cases that come into the county and come into our office is approximately around 87 to 88%. That other, somewhere between 10 to 12% is typically warrants, individuals that are still out there, that haven't been found or arrested, or a percentage of it are individuals that are under what we call Rule 20, which are commitment issues that we work through, individuals that have mental health issues, that either cannot proceed because they can't help and aid with the prosecution or with their own case, or their mental health issues caused them not to even understand what they were doing at the time. to understand even or form intent that they were committing a crime. So some of those cases end up hanging out there, if you will, and, and those individuals are in a commitment. Probably our biggest issue over the last year, we have had some turnover. I lost three and, three separate attorneys. We've seen, we've seen attorneys move or turn over just because a lot of individuals, young attorneys, that want to get down to the cities or they came from the Twin Cities originally, got some experience within my office, but then are heading back to that direction where they have family. That's what's happened in the case of two of my attorneys. And then one other attorney that was, she'd already been semi-retired. That was the position that was part-time. It turned into full-time position, but she was planning on moving into full-time retirement. And so currently that position's vacant. So we actually have two vacant positions. We're really seeing across the entire state, some difficulty in filling positions out of the 87 counties. 25 counties currently have at least one open position. And many of those counties have multiple attorneys open. In fact, Becker right next to us have three open positions currently. So we're seeing that kind of as a phenomenon that's happening right now. So there's some difficult times, at least they're happening. I think pay is a piece of what's happening out there with the differential that we are seeing between prosecutor pay and now public defender pay. So I am hopeful that our, our market study that we're going to be doing here or are doing here this year will help with some of that pay disparity and we'll see some of that. But one of our positions in the criminal team has been open since August. And in the past, we've never, I've never gone even two weeks without getting somebody that's applying. Typically, we used to have four to six attorneys applying for an open position. And now we're seeing zero over, you know, a seven, eight-month period. So that is, that is kind of some of the new normal that we're unfortunately seeing and, and have to deal with.
So. Are, are, are public defender salaries going to be part of the survey?
I would have to actually ask Darren on that. In the past, it has not been, but I think we are going to include that just because it is.
Yeah, he is indicating, yes.
Yeah, the attorneys, assistant county attorneys should be part of the market study as well this year.
The, but public defenders as well?
Um, we had not talked about that. Just what positions we have in the county and then going out to other counties with their assistant county attorneys. But I believe that we can't overlook the, the public defenders as well.
A fairly good disparity occurred in the last legislative session.
Correct.
By augmenting their salaries to the point where they're kind of hard to compete with, I think, so.
Yep, correct.
Our case totals, they stay generally fairly consistent. We are down a little bit, if you see from, say, 2021. I wouldn't say that we've come up with anything that caused, haven't solved issues of crime, but I would say some of those numbers being down really are due to both what you're seeing. Morehead Police Department has been down several police officers. I think at one point they were down at least six. When we see that, those kind of numbers, it's probably do more to just not being able to react or be around to see some of that crime or, you know, delayed timing to investigate some of that crime. And then us not having as many people to, to process some of those numbers as well. So, I mean, that's some of the things that we're seeing. On a couple of highlights, we're, we're constantly working to be on the cutting edge of electronic technology within the use of the office as well as the courtroom. Everything we do is laptop-based. We don't do any paper files or anything anymore. But probably our biggest thing we did over the last year, typically, as you might know, a lot of work that's being done now, body cameras are very instrumental in investigating crimes and, and working with all of our law enforcement partners that use body cameras. And so that storage or getting that evidence in the past, typically when we have to disclose that to defense attorneys, we have to put that onto a disk or onto a stick to, to get that out. And as you might imagine, those are large, large gigabyte things to fill in everything. So we put those onto discs. Just this year now, we have gone from putting those on media to a direct disclosure through a secure file transfer. And so I expect that's going to see, and we've just started doing it now. But that's a very good cost savings measure, a secure measure where we won't have to put that on and physically send that. We'll send that through the internet, so we won't be purchasing as many discs or sticks here in the future. And we'll see transfer just going directly to the defense attorneys. So that's a good, it, it'll help with timing, you know, less time to have to burn that on disk, but also just getting that over and, and a cost savings. And then finally, I wanted to just point out, Joe and I, as we look at the long-term plans for the courthouse and for the campus, there was a point where we were really at the limit of our use of space and we, we really had no more office space. But by able, being able to utilize the first floor and a suite of offices where the victim services went, they're there now and now we have a growth area that we can move into as we grow into the future. And that'll probably, it would very much help us with a five to seven-year plan of being able to grow into the area that we're still in. We won't have to move or add anything. So I think that's a pretty helpful thing that Joe and I have been working on for quite a while. I think just crime in general, you'll see the, the caseloads again remain pretty steady. It's really largely due to growth in the community. And then drug use is probably one of the biggest issues that we see that impact the amount of crime and the different things that happen within the community. Grand jury, I always like to mention that. In the past, we've used that very effectively. Two years ago, any, any type of crime that requires a life sentence or some other very serious matters, if a law enforcement officer is assaulted or, you know, other things that carry severe, significant sentences, such as some crim sex cases, you can use the grand jury to ultimately charge them with first degree murder. So we've had those, those usually come with an expense. This last year, we did not have any grand juries, but in the past, we've seen several of those. Our child need of protection or services cases remain steady as well, really for a lot of the same issues and reasons that we see a growth in the community. Drug use is usually a big, mental health and drug use are the big issues that usually are affecting those children and the reasons why they might have to be removed. And then our mental health cases are definitely continue to be on the grow. We just see a lot of impact that mental health issues come into the community and affect people and are typically either in the hospital and then need to look at commitment or they're in the jail. I think as you heard Carrie, when she was presenting here, some of the issues with the mental health individuals that we see within the jail. And then I think as Matt mentioned, Mike Leeser in my office and myself do a lot of the work on civil issues, contract work, representing and working with the different departments. And we've seen some good projects that have been working with the county here over the last few years. But just most recently here, the Dispatch Center, the Chemical Dependency Treatment Center, EMV, just to name a few. My staff for legal assistance and front staff work, they do a lot of work and put a lot of effort and time into things that you see that are really in the background and aren't a lot of often times talked about. But we have a lot of cases that get prepped throughout the year, even if they ultimately don't get tried. They might get resolved and settled, but they have to be set up, meaning that subpoenas, we had over 1,100 subpoenas sent out, notices, 1,700 plus notices to law enforcement to get them ready. And that can include besides trials, but we do a lot of contested issues, you know, where defense will contest, contest a case, contest the evidence that's against them. And so we have to be able to prepare, present those and fight those issues. And so a lot of prep work goes in behind the scenes, a lot of disclosure that gets sent out. As you can see with the volume that happens each day. And again, some of our new electronic disclosure will really help cut down on time and that type of thing. Administrative subpoenas are the type of subpoenas that we use to help if we're looking to gain access to telephone records, some internet records, that kind of thing to help with law enforcement and investigation of crimes. And so we're sending out a lot of those. And then detainers and RITs are individuals that have absconded or maybe in another state and we have to go get them and we have to do warrant process to get them. So there's a lot of work that gets done there. The criminal division, as you can see, the, the real turnover in there, our Jackson Elmquist is our newest attorney there. He's been here just this year. And as you can see, we have that one vacant position that's been vacant since, since August. But a, a good team that works with Pam and, and put a lot of effort and work into it. We had only nine jury trials last year. That's actually pretty low, about half of what we typically, usually we're about 25, 20 to 25. But we just saw a lot of issues, a lot of continuance issues, whether that had to do with, again, Rule 20 and mental health evaluations that stopped a trial from happening, interpreter issues and making sure we had interpreters, a lot of different things that sort of impacted our ability to get trials completed. But matter still got resolved and settled. Any case that goes forward to appeal after we sentenced somebody, we handle all of our appeals internally. So we had 11 cases that were affirmed with the Court of Appeals last year. I, in fact, this afternoon will be heading down with Mr. Leeser of the Twin Cities to argue to the Supreme Court. I have a murder case that convicted an individual that got a life sentence and that's an automatic appeal to the Supreme Court. So we'll be arguing that tomorrow to the Supreme Court. And so that's just a lot of work that we do. So we have 14 pending appeals for over this next year. And you can see some of the bigger convictions that happened. And there really was a lot of drug work in cases. I mean, you're averaging anywhere from about 75 to 80 months for some of our most severe drug traffickers that are out there and people that are preying on, on people with addiction. You can see some of the bigger issues that we saw last year. We had 31 first-degree aggravated, first-degree drug charge cases that we sent out last year, confiscated over 10,000 fentanyl pills, 500 grams of powdered fentanyl. That included a case that had xylazine in it. That's a, if you read some about some of the most severe impact that we're seeing in the drug issues, some communities that are getting hit with xylazine. It's a, it's a elephant tranquilizer that, that they're adding into it. It's, it's extremely addictive and extremely troubling for those people that take it. They end up getting sores that are basically gangrene and really horrific impact and addictive issues to individuals. But we have seen some of that at least starting to creep into the community. But hopefully we can continue to fight to keep that out. You can see the other meth that was seized, 158 grams. And I just put in there, I mean, we, with some psilocybin mushroom things, you can see how creative they get. They put them into candy bars. We see that kind of thing where they'll try a lot of things for transporting, moving things around, putting them into different things, which can obviously impact the community, impact. If that gets into young people's hands, that can really be difficult. So that's the kind of stuff we see. Drug court has been very successful for us, as all of you know. We appreciate the, the support that we get from the board. You know, one thing we know, and I constantly tell my drug prosecutors, you know, the difference of, you know, there's some serious traffickers that are out there that need to be dealt with and, and put into prison and taken out of the community. But there's also a large amount of people that need to be figured out. And I kind of say it's the master's class of, of figuring out who are the people that need to be put away and put into jail versus the people that really need treatment and given that chance to work through a program and work through a process. It's actually pretty difficult. I mean, it's a very intensive supervision, intensive case, the fact to get them either have employment or graduated from school, a full one-year sobriety. So currently we have 17 current participants. We had two graduations last year. I appreciate all the commissioners that have come there and supported those individuals when they graduated. We haven't had a lot of veterans. We're just not a community that has a, a lot of veterans that settle in our area. I mean, there are some veterans, but I'm glad to say there probably aren't a lot of them committing crimes, if you will. We've had some veterans in the past. Last year we had one veteran that was in there. He ultimately did graduate from the course and from the program, so that's a good thing. We do have a domestic violence court that's an accountability court. It tracks those individuals, makes sure that they're doing their treatment, that they're staying up on all the things they can do. And I know that we've had some discussion here in front of the board about a DWI court. That's still in the process of being created. There is some funding that's started to allow for that training, identifying how that court would work, the different participants. And so that's, that's continuing to move forward in this process. And so we're glad to see that continue to move forward. Just some statistics, as you can see, I like to try to give a four-year glimpse on things, how things are going. You can see that some of, again, as the numbers were down, our burglaries and thefts were down some, but you can still see large amounts, you know, 140-plus thefts throughout the year. Damage to property was up some, almost 40-plus for the year. So our property crimes are still consistently high. Some of the personal crimes, you can see the felony domestic assaults are still extremely high. 160-plus domestic assaults with strangulation or other serious events, other serious assaults, still close to 100 per year in our criminal sexual assault cases as well. DWI is always something that we're dealing with. And again, why I think a DWI court will be very effective and good for us. You can see the felony and gross misdemeanor DWI continue to remain high, well over 50. We had a high spike last year, as you can see, but 50 to 60 per year, just in the felony range. And then our drug crimes, just seeing where those are at over the last year.
Just out of curiosity, preparation for legal cannabis as it impacts on DWI and, and other things? Do you, is there anything that jumps up that we should know about?
Yeah, I don't know that we've seen specifically anything that's out of the normal. I mean, I, we knew that we would probably end up, you know, as the drug charges for marijuana would go down. And that might account for even some of that drop as you see in there. But I expect that we will see a greater spike as we, law enforcement gets more familiar with what they're looking for in the marijuana, that kind of thing. I don't know that I can say we've seen some huge spike, if you will, yet. But I expect we'll continue to see those numbers increase that will have more marijuana DWI as we go forward.
Thank you.
Traffic Matters, as you can see there, they just, they're always there and they do impact just caseloads and work that we do. The Civil Division, again, that's where you'd see the change. Mr. Leeser's been in the office just about eight years, but everybody else within that division under Katie now is different. So Mr. Lopez moved from the Criminal Division into the Civil Division. And then Adam Brenna was new. And again, we have that other vacancy sitting vacant now since January. But hopefully look to fill that short time in the future. Now you can see we had 67 CHIPS cases, Child Need Protection Services cases, 24 other permanency files, three CHIPS or termination of parental rights trials over the last year. The camp program is the County Attorney Mediation Program and involves truancy. Truancy is definitely something that you've seen kind of an ebb and flow throughout the county and throughout time. Sometimes there's grant money that the schools will do to try to work to prevent truancy. I would say we had a pretty good truancy program going as of March of 2020. And COVID did have an impact on that. We really had a difficult time regulating and saying whether kids were going to school or not because you couldn't say for sure on the, on the computer or on the screen. So really that truancy program died at a certain point in 2020. And then as things ramped back up, it was difficult moving forward to get that truancy program back. But as of now, this year, January of, of 2024, we have started the County Attorney Mediation Program again, really trying to look at truancy and help prevent some of that. And typically truancy is a very good gauge or needle that you can see just at the beginning that if, if children are having some problems in school, that's really just that baseline piece that there's other issues, whether it's drug problems, mental health problems, things that are going on with the families and the parents that need to get identified to help that juvenile get back on track, so.
Say, Brian, the, the truancy, what age range does that go up to?
We can start as early, so there's really, so the, the, the younger children for elementary school is actually ed neglect, meaning that we actually are holding the parent more accountable and trying to make sure that parent is getting that child to school once they're in high school. So really ninth grade through senior year is what we're looking at for truancy to try to help that, that young person, if you will, understand the importance of school, understand the importance of education and a diploma to help them, you know, move forward into the future. And so that's, that's really that age, the, the range that we're looking at for truancy is really high school range.
I guess, I guess I was, I was just wondering about in terms of, at what age can a, can a child say, I'm just not going to go to? can a child say, I'm just not going to go to school anymore?
There is, so there's emancipation. So that's, that's at balance too. So really, you know, that ninth grade, tenth grade, we're concentrating hard on them because there is that point where when they're, uh, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, um, they could ultimately choose to not attend any further. Uh, so there is a balance of trying to figure out whether we do or don't want to file. Um, and again, that's why we do the camp.
Right.
That County Attorney Mediation Program is, is calling or sending a letter to that student and their parents, have them come in to talk to them about the importance of, of education and give them some statistics about what it means and what their future, you know, may or may not look like without education, uh, and then ultimately whether we will or won't file, uh, a truancy petition against them, uh, to ultimately look to bring them back into court. So that's kind of that next phase. Uh, adoption, I just wanted to highlight. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner.
I probably missed on the permanency. What, what is that, open twenty-four permanency?
So permanency petitions are where they're looking at, um, placing someone for a permanent position. So they may not, um, uh, TPR might not terminate their parental rights, but they're going to place that child into foster care, uh, long-term because of the difficulties that they're having. Uh, but maybe that parent is still, uh, working towards reunification, but, but it's considered a permanent. It's going to be longer than a, a year's timeframe to, to place that child.
Thank you.
Adoption, I think, is something we just wanted to highlight, uh, in the past, uh, individuals that wanted to work towards adoption, ultimately the final, uh, phase and outlook of things they had to do for filing, uh, matters in court. Uh, they were responsible on their own, but, uh, uh, the cost savings of, of, uh, putting some, uh, specific procedures in place and some of that paperwork through the County Attorney's Office and filing that for those individuals. Uh, you know, we expect typically it's a six to twelve-month process and we think we'll probably reduce that by at least three to six months, uh, to help that, uh, process move faster, uh, save some time, obviously for that child to get a, a permanent solution, to get adopted. Uh, and those are definitely the good news stories that we like to see, uh, in court. And so last year we had, uh, probably one of our highest numbers over the years of, of eighteen, uh, separate children that were adopted, um, for the year. Our, our juvenile crime files, about two hundred and thirty-two last year. Uh, we didn't have any specific trials. All those matters resolved. Um, forfeitures, uh, you know, a lot of drug cases that we see, uh, have money, uh, or other, uh, products, cars, that kind of thing that will forfeit so that the, those benefits are not left in the hands of the drug dealers. And so we had fifty-four cases last year. Um, you know, we're not a, a office that makes money, um, but there is some billing that we can do for the child support work we do and the welfare fraud work that we, we complete in, in court. Uh, so there is some savings or some money that we can get from the state there. And then both our guardianships, uh, and guardianship conservatorship and commitments have definitely increased. Uh, I think as you, again, you, when you heard, uh, Carrie Tooten, our commitments, uh, either social services will hear from the hospitals and somebody that is having some mental health issues, but we'll also see from the jail, uh, numerous people that they're having that mental health issue. They may make contact, you know, we'll have somebody that's out in, outside during the winter, no coat, no shoes on, barefoot, having a mental health crisis. They'll make contact with the police, but they might become assaultive, assault that police officer, get, get arrested, but obviously their main issue really is mental health issues. And so they'll be sitting there in the jail as we identify the mental health issues that they, they have and need. And that's what the Rule Twenty is, is about, but we've seen a definite increase in those. Um, again, so there's our delinquency, two hundred and thirty-two, um, last year juvenile cases. We also do diversion on a lot of cases, uh, chemical dependency, whether it's, uh, juveniles with minor consumings or, or tobacco. Uh, we'll look to try to divert them first and have them understand the impacts of those as well as some offenses, uh, driving matters, that kind of thing that we'll look to do diversion with. And then Child Need Protection Services, uh, as a stud, uh, we can see the cases there for different protection, uh, Child Need Protection Services cases, our permanency or, and/or TPR, ultimately termination of rights cases that we had, and then voluntary placements as well, we track. And then our, uh, again, you can see our commitment numbers definitely just continue to move up as well as the Rule Twenties and, and you can see that those are, are definitely increasing and, and, uh, do have an impact. And then finally, I want to highlight, uh, Victim Services. Uh, they do, uh, a great job of, of keeping, uh, victims informed, uh, having them understand and work through the process. Uh, Michelle has a good team, uh, typically herself and Alexi Gomez work, uh, personal crimes, uh, Nikki Erickson, uh, more property crimes. Lucas Brandon is our newest individual. He took over, uh, to do the restorative justice. We used to have Alex there who left, but Lucas is doing a terrific job. He is in the schools. He is a dynamic person and one of the few people that I know that owns a top hat. So I just thought, I was, I guess he really wanted to put that picture in there, which is, but anyway, really a, a great guy. And, and one of the things after I talk, I have a slide that'll talk a little bit about restorative justice, but I think at the end of the school year, it'd be good to have him come in and present to the board and talk about some of the things that he's seen now through the last year, uh, that he's been present and, and, but he is really doing a great job for us. Uh, and then Olivia works a lot of the juvenile cases and some of the civil side of things. And again, so Victim Services, uh, works to ensure victim rights, provide court notifications, assists with restitution, uh, company victims in court and, and working with referrals. Even though some of our numbers for our, our, just numbers overall for crime and cases that we've had were down, you can see our, our actual numbers for affidavits of loss are, are right up there or even I think a little bit more than what we had last year. And I think what that shows is just the organization, uh, and I appreciate, uh, Olivia being a new person. I think she's helped to streamline, work some of that, uh, just working to make sure that those cases are prioritized, getting those victims to be made whole, get, get money back to them, whether it's businesses or persons. But I think also we're just seeing there's more cost, you know, things are more expensive. So when you're, well, iPhone getting broken or a car getting stolen and, and destroyed, it's, it's costing a lot more. So, uh, that's, that's some of the things that we're seeing cost-wise. Um, in regard to restorative justice then, you can see what our last year numbers were, um, a little bit down this year, but I think some of that was just the changeover from Alex to now Lucas, uh, but you're seeing him really take off here in this second semester. Um, I would point out, our, out of a hundred and fifty-two diversion referrals, nineteen were preventative responses, meaning they didn't even, they weren't through an SRO, you know, School Resource Officer, or through law enforcement or through our office. They were direct, uh, referral right from the school. And that's, that's what we'd like to see that number, that nineteen number become forty or fifty or more, where, where the school's just recognizing right away that that's something that they can use. Uh, so I, I expect we'll see that number, uh, moving up and, and continuing to increase. And then, um, all the five school districts were utilizing restorative justice last year. So, uh, we're excited about that and, and really see that success. And then you can just see that, I, I think successful completion of, of, uh, restorative justice helps. You can see last year, uh, ninety percent no new offense and this year, close to the same, eighty-nine percent. Uh, and so you just see that it's helping, uh, keep those individuals out of the court system, out of, um, re-offending, that kind of thing. So I think it's pretty successful and pretty helpful.
Just, uh, touch on that. Uh, we allocated some of the public safety funding that we got from the state in the restorative justice program this year. And I, with the knee surgery, I didn't go up. We presented, we were asked to present to the, uh, Public Safety Committee. I'm the co-chair there, uh, because we had done a lot of good things with that money that other counties wanted to know about. And the thing that, uh, Commissioner Mojo presented it for us and the thing that, uh, really resonated with the public safety group was how wise a choice directing that into restorative, directing some funds into restorative justice was. So, um, you know, that's one of the things that's acknowledged around the state is of, of real value and kind of reforming how we're doing things out there. So I appreciate.
And then I, I mentioned that. I know we talked about that, whether that was last, uh, board or two times ago, but I, I do just want to thank again the commission for allocating those public safety funds. I think it is a great use. I'm glad to see other counties recognize that. It's, I think it's really helping us and I think seeing Lucas really take off. And, and so again, I think at the, at the end of the school year, I'd like to see him come back and kind of talk through. They, they were talking about some success stories the other day. Uh, uh, one of the victims of, uh, crime that went through restorative justice, she actually had written some letters to the, the juvenile defendant about how she felt and how she had forgiven him, uh, and how she understood him making mistakes and, and that he, I mean, the, the work that was being done, not just by the, that juvenile or by the defendant, but, but by the victim, um, and the effort that they were making was, was amazing. So, uh, I think those stories, uh, need to be shared. I'd like to make sure they come before you here after, after you get done with the school year. I think it's pretty busy right now, but it is definitely a successful program. So, thank you again. Uh, just, uh, some quick numbers then, uh, how we've seen victims being served. We continue to see our numbers be pretty high, uh, with our contacts and, and who we're serving, uh, through the program. And, and so making sure that they're as, uh, well-served as possible, that they understand the process, uh, that they, uh, can be heard in court, uh, victim impact statements, those types of things are, are very important and a primary concern for us. Uh, so that's just some numbers. But with that, that's everything I have. Subject to any questions. I, I do want to thank you again for the support over last year. Uh, it was a very successful year and, and looking forward to another successful two thousand twenty-four.
Any questions?
Just a comment that I've, with that report, I don't know, if you ask for more staff, I, I vote yes right now.
I appreciate that, Commissioner.
Realize you just said that.
You know, I, I do think, um, I'm, I'm, I, I am hopeful, but we, we do need to see those positions get filled. I mean, I, we're not, uh, at a point of, say, crisis yet, uh, but you're starting to see that stress where numbers are backing up. Uh, we want to make sure that we're not, uh, delaying things. Sometimes, uh, justice delayed can be justice denied where, you know, if it takes a while to get to some of those cases. So, so we're working hard. We, we're gonna make even a larger, we typically go and talk to students up at UND, but we're gonna do a very specific, uh, presentation up there. Uh, so I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what the, I mean, I have my anecdotal reasons or ideas of some of just the, um, I guess the milieu that's out there currently or how people see, whether it's law enforcement, prosecution, I don't know if that's kind of weighing into some of those things. Again, some of it being money, but I think just getting out there, uh, talking to individuals, letting them know the, the important work that's done, the, the benefit you get from serving the public and, and helping the community by, by being a prosecutor and, and working in the office. I, I'm hopeful we can get out there and, and get those positions filled as soon as possible.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Brian, I know you, um, you, you just mentioned, uh, a little bit that, you know, based on your attorney vacancies that you have right now, that hopefully you're not getting things too far backed up. But how about the courts? Is, I know for a while, at one point, uh, there was a backlog in the, in the courts themselves. Has that, has that gotten better?
Yeah, I, I, in the past, I've talked, I think probably the last three years about our backlog and that backlog was based on a number that we were at back in two thousand twenty when we hit. And, and there was a period of time, that three, four months where the courts were closed. And so that backlog took a fairly significant period of time, probably a good two-year period plus, uh, to get it cleared. But our backlog is completely cleared. The state courts, uh, and the Supreme Court that directs all them is considered that the backlog really, and we tracked it really closely for quite a while, numbers wise and everything, um, that we're, we're clear of that, if you will, and back on track. Um, you know, and again, we're seeing numbers, even though they're a little bit down now, they generally continue to go up based on, at least within our county, based on population growth and some of those things. But, but we're doing pretty well for the, uh, that, that COVID backlog, if you will, uh, is, is cleared up.
Just wanted to make an observation. I worked with you since I got here, Chief, what, in two thousand and six, and I've watched your office and, um, always had a good working relationship, always enjoyed working with you. This last few years, between COVID and all the things that we see and watching your report today, it is amazing, the nexus of some of the biggest problems we have in our community, drugs, uh, youth issues, uh, the need to reform, uh, in, in how we police, all these things. It all crosses your office and I think your people and you have done a wonderful job of addressing the needs as they come in and being innovative where you can and stretching when things, when resources are tight. Um, you know, I'm very grateful for it. I live here too and I, uh, the, the issues that I had in my professional career before I retired are still foremost in my mind. I think you're doing a lot to address it. And, uh, just, I'm grateful for that.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments? Steve?
Mr. Chair, one of the things that, the slide that he didn't have, uh, up there, which, uh, is extremely important, I think needs to be acknowledged, is the work that Brian and his staff do on behalf of, of administration and this board. Uh, there's probably rarely a day where Brian and I aren't touching base, uh, on some issue. And so, uh, we really heavily rely on, on the knowledge and the, and the feedback and direction. So I wanted to acknowledge that. So thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Milton. Have fun at the State Supreme Court.
Thank you. No fun is the exact word, but it'll be interesting. It'll be a good argument. Yeah, good stuff. Thank you.
All right. Next we have, oh, I'm, oh, uh, let's take a five-minute break. And, uh, next, last but not least on our agenda is, uh, request approval for an additional Clay County two thousand and four legislative priority. We have Justin and Steve here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you, uh, certainly recall, this past fall, this board, uh, vetted a number of important issues that, uh, were specific to Clay County in addition to the AMC policies, uh, and legislative priorities that get brought forward. Uh, through that vetting process, uh, this committee, uh, identified three, uh, significant areas that they want to have additional focus on flood diversion funding, uh, nine-one-one emergency response funds, uh, and also mental health acuity, uh, specifically psychiatric residential treatment facilities. Uh, part of, uh, this past fall, we had a number of legislators that came through Clay County. Uh, and, and part of, uh, one of those tours, uh, we had a number of legislators that went with, uh, Justin and I believe Commissioner Mojo, uh, at the time, uh, and did a road tour on, on County Road twenty-six. And so I have Justin here to kind of talk a little bit about, uh, the importance of, of, uh, of the road conditions on Highway twenty-six and some of the things that were addressed.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. So like you mentioned last fall, I met with, so it was the Chair of the Transportation Committee of both the House and the Senate. So we kind of, our conversation was focused around Casal twenty-six and the issues that arose when the Amazon facility was being built in North Fargo and just kind of the additional stresses that that roadway seen during this time. So originally the project was slated for a thin mill and overlay and it was supposed to be like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile. Well, as part of this project, the rutting and the pavement distress astronomically increased to where we had to, and I don't like to be reactive, but we had to be reactive and start fixing this road. And we talked about a lot of different things on the road, including gravel. And we thought it was, you know, good to bring it to their attention that the issues that we were seeing and it really wasn't benefiting the county in terms of, um, the gravel tax wasn't going anywhere as far as fixing our road. And that's kind of the gist of the tour that we had and the, um, commissioners or the members of the Transportation Committee cannot believe the amount of truck traffic that was on the road even during that time. And then they were also able to see the stretch of twenty-six that was fixed last year and complemented the project. And we kind of went through what our next plan was, the project that we opened bids on today, and then the following, next year, having the final stretch from Highway seventy-five to the Red River. And I kind of put together estimates at what it costed us last year, what it's going to cost us this year and what it's going to cost us the final year.
Uh, so in, in response to that, uh, you see, as part of your attachment, Representative Keeler did bring forward a House bill, uh, twenty-four zero-five. And then there's also a companion bill, uh, from Senator Kupac, Senate File forty-two fifty-seven, uh, for a, a total amount of four point five million dollars, uh, towards, uh, towards the, uh, Casal twenty-six. And, and again, to, to complete, uh, parts of the next two, two phases.
Mm-hmm. And I guess part of, I really didn't touch on it today during the bid opening, but the reason for the addendum and pushing the start date back to June third was if this is in a bonding bill and signed, it would allow us to use the money on Casal twenty-six. Originally we had it starting whenever road restrictions were lifted. June third would allow us to be flexible in terms of if this is signed into a bonding June 3rd would allow us to be flexible in terms of if this is signed into a bonding bill, we could apply it to the $3.6 million bid that we had, we got today. And then also, obviously, the bid came in under four and a half million. We can use the additional money if we were to receive it on next year's project because it, that House file is from Cassau 27 to the Red River, so we can use it next year on the final phase of the project.
That was my question.
And for clarity, what did you say, nine and a half miles or 9.1, whatever?
9.5 was the project that we opened today.
Yeah, okay.
Last year's was seven and a half.
But that is work to be completed this season.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And what's the distance from 75 to the river?
Just about, just under three miles.
So, the request before the board, when this board made the decision back in December about the legislative priorities, this item had not come to fruition to the point that it had. And so, the request before this board this morning would be to consider to add this as a fourth legislative priority.
Let's move.
A motion second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Start with Commissioner Campbell.
All right, let's see here, February 27th, we had an MCC JPA special meeting. We went over some reimbursement requests for two locations which were approved and then we approved some other optional agreements and negotiations on some other properties. So, those are, those were all approved. We did, we also did get word that, I think on March 25th and March 27th are the dates for the condemnation hearings for properties within Clay County. One of the issues that was brought to our attention was that, that in doing that, Clay County is gonna have to put into deposit the value that had been predetermined, the numbers that we're looking at in that regard amount to, in excess right now of $8 million. So, sort of that guideline, I think, I think by the end of March, that money would have to be deposited into an account. I'm assuming it's like a escrow account, so to speak, but. So, I raised the issue of, with the MCC JPA about the concern about having those monies drawn from our cash reserves and how long it would take for the reimbursement process on that. And so, in those discussions, it was determined that we could submit that to the finance, the diversion finance committee this month yet so that it would get in and approved by the finance committee of which then it goes directly to the diversion authority for final approval on, I believe it was the 28th, it's whatever that Thursday, last Thursday is in March. And so, we could be, hopefully, we're looking at a time period of maybe just a matter of a couple of days difference between when we would have to upfront that money versus when the diversion authority would reimburse us for that. And I, you know, I happened to have a conversation with Lori yesterday and, and again, to follow up on that timeline, she, she wanted to see the diversion authority submit that bill to her this week. And so, I, so I sent a memo to Jody and Joel Paulson and Eric Dodds and those that are involved with the lands, telling them that we need to have that bill this week so that then we can turn around, submit it to the finance committee, which meets the Wednesday before the diversion authority meeting. And, and so, they, I got a response from Jody, who is the head of the lands, Jody Smith, and she did say that they would be working on that to do that. So, it's kind of a, it's a complicated deal, but it's a, it's a real concern on our part because we don't, we just don't have $8 million laying around that we can just put out for a period of time and, and not only that, but I think Lori said that that can amount to $20,000 and lost interest on that, so. So, that's, thank you, and I'm thankful for Lori for making sure we're aware of those timelines that were needed. That same day, we also had a building improvement committee meeting and we went over, Joel had presented a new preliminary facilities capital plan. It's just kind of very early, rough mapping out of different things. He's also been working on a space needs survey review that, from the different departments, what they're, what they're gonna see for their additional needs moving into the future. And then the family service center capital and master plan discussion, what's gonna happen when detox moves out and some of those things going on. We did, we were able to, let's see, there's gonna be a couple of small office vacancies and I think we're gonna get into a lot of these discussions when we have our work group session on that last Tuesday in, in March, of which we'll be able to update some of these other discussions that we've had. We did, we did take a tour of the new family healthcare facility, dental facility, and boy, I'll tell you what, I think they put about 1.2, well, I think that, yeah, $1.2 million into that facility and then an additional probably six to 800,000 in equipment. And it's, it's pretty impressive and I think that's gonna, that'll go a long way and there'll be tenants for a long time in there. And it's also gonna be a, used as a educational for dental hygiene and that type of thing for people moving forward, so it's a really positive note. On the 28th then, I ended up, I went to perm for our Prairie Lakes meeting. It's always nice when you get there and the plant manager report says it's running well and it's, you know, so we didn't have a whole lot to talk about. They are gonna have a major plant shutdown on March 18th, starting on March 18th, that's gonna be for two weeks, but that's been a planned process for, that they deal with a lot of their major operations changes. We continue to have discussions on ash management and the ash, the need for finding alternative places for the ash to go. But we, at the same point in time, we also approved, moving forward with the, asking Otter Tail County to move forward with a permit application to expand the current ash site and that the Prairie Lakes would, would be willing to pay for that permit that, because it's owned by Otter Tail County, so. Agreed to do that. Thursday morning, we had the solid waste advisory committee meeting. We got a, Shannon Thompson gave a, an update to the group on the process that we use for funding our local communities, what share they get for the score funding that we do And then, of course, we heard our last report from Brett Rice, who's moving to Florida, so we've got that position and we think we acted on that last week to replace that. And a good update from Cory on solid waste issues, whether they're dealing with, from the resource recycle facility here and at the landfill. And then I, we also have, next month, we scheduled our annual discussion with the city going over that contract that we have with the facility and to make sure that there's no changes that will need to happen within that contract. Yesterday, we had construction updates on both the withdrawal management detox facility and the motor vehicle department. Both of those projects seem to be going very well. There's various, just a couple of very small changes right now that are, like, are three or $4,000 deals that, but certainly nothing of major significance. And I believe they're gonna also be here on March 19th. Gertz Construction will be here on March 19th to go over with everybody and show them how each project's doing with some aerial views and some photographs of what's going on. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Commissioner Gross.
Last February 27th, I also had the building improvement committee and I was just, anything further as far as what Commissioner Campbell discussed? I mean, that family healthcare center, if you go through, they've really utilized every inch of space over there. I mean, they put a lot of stuff into the space that they rented and I think they're gonna be a very good tenant over there and it's a good deal what they did over there. Yesterday, I had Minnesota Rural Caucus meeting, had a few senators talking to us, Senator Utke talked. Most of his speech was pretty much just on that they're busy getting, excuse me, going over all the bills and they're talking about, they got 1,600 bills filed, you know, and normally they asked how many bills did they get done during the year. It's about 75 bills that get approved at the end of the year, they get seven, and they got 1,600 bills to go through this year, so I don't know how many they'll get to go back to or not. Talked about the 155,000 acres, going back to the White Earth Tribe in Becker County, what that's gonna involve and there's a discussion on that. Talked about the behavior, how old the 48-hour rule, that they're gonna be working on that, trying to get that. I don't know what they can do about it other than get more facilities, so hopefully we can get our facility approved out of that. They talked about Feral Peaks invasion coming in, southern Minnesota, so I don't know what they're gonna do, what they plan on doing, shooting them or what they're gonna do, but they're concerned about the invasion of the pigs down there. Budget forecast, again, they said there was 1.3 billion new money and they're looking at probably trying to save it for a two-year bonding bill. I don't know how much they're gonna spend of it this year. They want 20% of the bonding bill to go for roads and wastewater. One item was, they said that we can use county money for the Veterans Day activities. I don't know if we got any requests or not, but we can use county money for that. Some counties were complaining about they want a quicker action on some of the bills and MRC says, well, there's some of the bills that they don't sponsor or not really go after is the fact that they know they're not gonna pass anyway, so why spend their time on going on those bills? So, also noticed on Zoom meetings that we had, well, I know we had one last week where Dave, or two weeks ago when Dave was gone, there has to be a post to put up. This is something about, you have to put a post in on his house that there's a meeting going on, so I don't know if we were following all the rules or not, but.
On that, I cleared it with the county attorney and Mr. Larson prior to. My physician sent a note saying that it was necessary for me for up to a period of three weeks to attend remotely. I did the first week and came back under the statute, the controls, that my understanding and they concurred was that I wouldn't need to post my address if it's for medical.
Like I say, they were just mentioning that it needs to be posted on the house. I'm not the queen of it, all the rules either, so I don't know if there's something we have to check out on rules or not when we do that. And the last thing I got is on the Wild Rise Watershed, didn't have a meeting, but I've been talking to Tara, the administrator up there, we're looking for applications for the Wild Rise Watershed. And I don't, did we get Neil, Mark Carlos's resignation yet or that he does not intend to run again or if we got anything on him?
Yep.
We did, okay. Well, we're looking for newer, I don't think we've got too many applications yet. I think the application's closed today or tomorrow and I was just wondering if we could extend that because just got notices about contact there on three, four people concerning that and can we extend that opening or is that a Wild Rise thing?
No, we can't because we are required to post it in the paper and our paper stated that we would be closing tomorrow.
Tomorrow is the end date? Okay, very good. There's some people who wanted to contact. Very good. Okay, that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kravonoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had one meeting this week, that was our Moorehead Planning Commission. I held that yesterday and we had two requests. The one of some interest, we found this is involving County Ditch 67, so if you'll go 11th Street and up to Wall Street, just south of that, there's a ditch that runs east-west and there's a box culvert that goes on there 11th Street and they're gonna be, as part of their flood mitigation plan, the City of Moorehead, they're gonna be putting a gate on that for more protection for the people in the McCanns addition, if that water would back up from the river so that it protects the people to the south and to the east. Also, anyway, that was approved and that work will be going on over the next year. Also, the other, one other two-year extension of a development use for area at 1-4th Street, it's called the Bullock Square, which is right around where United Sugar is, roughly in that area. And anyway, a two-year extension for that and that was with Epic Holdings and they aren't quite sure what's gonna go there yet, but it's part of the redevelopment and the reason for their, they're still doing soil samples to know what they can build on that space. So, anyway, those are two items that were approved and we'll move on to the Moorehead City Council. That's my report.
Thank you. Only thing I have to report on this week, yesterday I worked with Jill Minette, the personnel director for the City of Fargo. HR in Fargo is overseeing the hiring process for the Triple R D C director position that's open. We'll be bringing two candidates in and have one internal candidate, be bringing them in Thursday. They'll, the two who are from out of town will be getting tours of the jurisdictions and the agencies on Thursday. Friday, we're gonna have a series of interviews and discussions on this. Selection committee, hopefully, will have a candidate recommendation for the Board of Authority by, by Friday afternoon. And in a perfect world, and I spent a lot of phone time yesterday and I'm gonna spend some after the meeting today, we can get the Board of Authority together, at least enough of them who are comfortable to try and get a meeting set for Friday afternoon and make a selection by the end of the week. If not, we will have to try and get everybody together sometime next week, but again, in a perfect world, we will have a director selected here within the week. It has been a very interesting process, but I think we've gotten a lot of input from a lot of people who should be heard and we will hopefully come up with a great selection. And that's all I've got. Steve, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I participated in MCC JPA meeting, which has been covered in detail. On the 27th, I also met with Joe Olson on a series of county facility issues. That afternoon, I talked with Daral Leah, has been mentioned. We are meeting with the, having a joint meeting on March 19th at 1:00 PM with the Clay County HRA board. And so, we talked about agenda items, we're looking at an overall input of what the HRA entails. We're also looking at inviting Jennifer Bergum, Minnesota Housing Director of Local Government government housing, to give a short presentation, and then also a better understanding of the budget process from, from the HRA's position. If there are any additional items that you'd like on that agenda, please let me know. On the 27th, I met with Lisa Bode, Government Affairs, City of Morehead, in regards to our legislative priorities. On the 27th, we had a Building Committee meeting, also that it was covered by, has been covered by Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Gross. The 28th, I also met with Brian Milton on a series of county issues. On the 29th, I participated in SWAC, which has been covered. And also, that day, I met with Darren Brooke on a personal county matter. Also, that afternoon, I met with Mike Leaser and Lieutenant Gabe Tweeden. If you recall, about a year ago in Comstock, we had a, an oil spill that happened that needed to be mitigated, one by the county, and the MPCA came through. That, end up, the bill of the cleanup was over $50,000. And so, we've had, I've been working with the citizens who have, who are part of that and hoping to come to resolution for repayment there. Last Friday, I had a MACA legislative call. Again, we talked on the budget forecast. We talked on the forfeited tax land issues that we have. To this point, the legislators have not been supportive of providing state funding for repayment, even though the state law was deemed unconstitutional. We talked about E S S T. It sounds like, right now, there's some legislation to expand what can be covered even farther under E S S T, and so, we'll see where that goes. And we talked about some Voting Rights Act information. On that afternoon, I met with Sheriff Empting on a series of issues. Yesterday, I participated in the detox and DMV owners' meetings. Again, as was mentioned, I think September of this year is when we're targeted for the detox, and also, the steel is done on the DMV, and we'll be seeing some additional walls go up, and the roof secured here in the coming month. Just a few different items. Again, today's the presidential nomination primary. The voting is open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If citizens are wondering where they can vote, both either in, within the county or within the City of Morehead, they can go to our webpage to identify that. I would also note that, starting tomorrow, we have spring load, road restrictions north of Highway 10. They'll run for up to eight weeks, and a notification will come out when those restrictions will be lifted. Social Service Director interviews, you guys received a packet of the vetted, vetted applications today. We're looking to, to set up interviews for the week of the 18th. And so, if you could take a look over those applications, again, it's up to the board's wishes of whether or not they want to interview all of the applicants, or if we would like to vet that down to a smaller number. And so, if you could have those done potentially by the end of this week, so we could reach out to the potential applicants and give them about a week notice, that would be great. And then, just wanted to follow up our discussion with Cecilia earlier today. State statute, Minnesota State Statute 38.36 subdivision one indicates that the board will, this county board will, will do three-year, three-year extension for committee members. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Jackie, what do you got for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, Steve covered my comments regarding the election information, but we do also have it on our, the link on our social media as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think, and Lori Johnson, at our meeting, had asked, I think Frank and I are going to be here Friday morning for the Board of Canvas, too, for those election results. So, we'll be doing that Friday morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? We're adjourned.